Good evening. Welcome to this City of Peoria Council meeting for Tuesday, January 6th. The first item up is the Pledge of Allegiance and the posting of the colors in the pledge, led by Boy Scout Troop 546. Gentlemen?
Color Guard. Please rise. Hand salute. Those who are not in uniform, please place your hand over your, your right hand over your heart. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, present the colors. Color Guard, prepare to post the colors. Color Guard, post the flag of the United States of America. Color Guard, post the flag of the great state of Arizona. Color Guard, post the flag of the City of Peoria. Color Guard, honor your colors. Everyone, please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guard, reform. Color Guard, you are dismissed. Audience, please be seated.
Gentlemen, before you leave, gentlemen, oh, hold on. Would you please come over to this podium and introduce yourselves to the crowd?
I'm Garrett.
Garrett what?
Daniel.
Say, say your full name.
I'm Garrett Daniel.
Thank you.
I'm Preston Hempel.
I'm Ian Nordstrom.
I'm Aiden McLendon.
I'm Noah Connors.
I'm Brah Monting.
I'm Jackson Keane.
I'm Benjamin Forsythe.
I'm A.J. Orozco.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is the time to file, call to request for, to submit speaker request forms. They are in the lobby. Fill them out, give them to the clerk. We will call upon you at the appropriate time. First item up is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda are all items that are listed with a C. They're considered to be routine or been previously reviewed by the council. It will be enacted by one motion unless someone wants something withheld. Hearing no, we have the minutes, yeah, okay. So moved. Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next up is Presentations. We are going to the outgoing council members. We're going to start with Vice Mayor Ron Ames because Mr. Rivero is running late.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Barrett. I have the honor of presenting the plaques to the mayor and outgoing council members. And of course, this is an important evening for the city. It's our ceremonial evening, the changing of the guard, if you will, for the mayor and council members. And the first part of the meeting is a recognition of the outgoing elected officials, and we'll take a break, and the swearing in of the new elected officials, and an opportunity for, for them to greet the public as well. So with that, Vice Mayor Ames, would you come down? The plaque is presented to Dr. Ron Ames in recognition of your leadership and outstanding service to the City of Peoria as a council member and Vice Mayor, 2007 to 2014. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I would like to say a few words. And first, I'd like to say it's been a real pleasure to have been on the council the last eight years, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, minute of it. And I feel I've served the Palo District, District, Palo Verde District very well. And I would like to thank all of the citizens in, in the Palo Verde District and in the city overall, who have worked with me on various projects. And my council assistants, my current council assistants, Terri Smith, she's been super without that, that help to actually implement things that we decide are good for the city or for the district and that, that we promote. She has to follow through. And Carl Swenson, you just saw him, and Steve Kemp, and the entire city staff. I've, they've always responded well and positively to me regarding citizen matters and my ideas, and so I thank them for that, and I enjoyed working with the entire, entire staff, and I may way too many names to mention, but a lot of them are here right now, and I appreciate the, the good work the city does and how well they, they work with, with the council and the policy and implementations that we do. And I'd also like to thank my fellow council members, who I've worked closely with in the present and some in the past, and some in the past are going to be up there shortly, so it'll be, it's kind of like a little bit of a door turning, opening. In the district, you know, I've, I've responded to well over a thousand citizen requests, ranging from fixing street cracks and erosion, you know, they call me up and say, "This is terrible." Sometimes it was pretty terrible, sometimes not so much, but I worked with Bill Mattingly and, and others, and then we, we got those repaired and it made the citizens very happy. Code matters, a lot of code matters that we do address. Sometimes they have to be implemented, sometimes we have to look and see if it really is a meaningful violation. Trash pickup and all kinds of things, so daily endeavors, and I will miss, I will miss them. The one thing that I'm proud of in terms of the district, I did beautify the streets in our district. Had walls painted and stucco, neighborhood entry signs installed, and weeds cleared, and new landscaping. You drive down Cactus and Thunderbird and 75th, and now 67th and 87th and 85th, they look a lot better. They looked kind of down, down on their years in many places, and that's not the kind of thing you want to happen in, in your city. When that happens, you start getting deterioration, home values start to drop, and so I worked with a lot of citizens, and they're very happy about that, and I'm very happy about that. That's one of the things I told Terri Ellis when I first came into office, that I was going to die in office if that wasn't improved, because that's a very basic thing, the look of, look of our city and the look around our neighborhoods. I've had city accomplishments. I was on the regional transportation boards, Valley Metro and MAG, and, and also the Light Rail Board for a while, and I, I had some really strong impact. One of them was sound walls. We got sound walls along our 101 freeway. I was sitting in the meeting, this was early on, and it was proposed because there was money left over from rubberizing the freeways. This is a little bit before the Great Recession, and so ADOT was going to put up sound walls. And the proposal by the MAG staff was, well, if you're not going to get another lane in 10 years, then we'll, we'll put up the sound walls. And I just raised my hand and said, "People don't want to wait 10 years. Why don't we make that two years?" And no one else on, on the board said anything, so it was two years. That was one of the easiest things I ever had done, but paying attention and listening. One of the more powerful things that I accomplished on, on the MAG Regional Board was when we had the IRA funds, the Great Recession, had money coming from the federal government, our money coming back. The proposal was to extend the HOV lane on the 101 freeway from the 51th to the 17th. MAG directors proposed that. That was one of the things we were going to submit, and I raised my hand and said, "Why don't we do the HOV lane all the way along the 101 on our side, the west side of town, all the way to the 10 freeway?" And I said, "Oh, no, no, that wouldn't happen. We've already submitted our proposal. The federal government would never do that." Well, I bugged them, and Dave Moody bugged them, and finally they did another proposal. And you know, we got that HOV lane, didn't we? And it's there today, and it was built in a year. It was the best way to get it, because if it wouldn't have happened there because of that extra money during the Great Recession, we wouldn't have it today, and, and things are, you know, picking up from the list, and that wasn't that high on the list. It was one of the things, the federal government loves HOV lanes, so they were happy to spend the money on that. I supported economic development projects. We know where, that those are important. We want to bring companies and jobs to the City of Peoria, and the incubator, and Trine University and some others, so, and I worked with the rest of the council on that. One of the things that was interesting, we had those red light cameras, you know, and stops at stoplights at four locations in the City of Peoria. And it was first proposed that that was really going to prevent red light accidents. Well, we saw that that wasn't happening, and accidents were actually increasing. And I, I gotta, I thank our police chief, because I worked carefully with him, and we looked at that data, and we saw there was a 25% increase in accidents at all those intersections. It was doing harm and not good, and many citizens just were so fearful of those red light cameras, and they wouldn't even go to those intersections, so I was glad that happened, and that's a way the council can work with staff members and, and work seriously. I helped reduce taxes a little bit, and I think that's one of the things the city should always look at, can we reduce taxes? That was the food tax, and that's went into effect in this year from last year's budget meetings. One of the things that's interesting, you kind of want to work with the other elected officials, and we, and we had a person, his son was killed on 83rd near Thunderbird, Joey, Joey Ramirez, and his father said, "Wow, we got to do something about that." This person, you know, it's a hit and run, left the accident. And she was going to, you can, you can be punished, you can have your driver's license taken away for a while, but if you go to jail, that time counts. And so we got, another law was passed, and Steve Kemp and our good friend John Shell, who is no longer with us, and I, we worked with the legislation, we got that passed. And then later, we got another one passed, and, and that really says, if you leave the scene of accident and you're gone for a while, you can't really be tested whether you were, you were drunk or on drugs, right? Because the time has passed. So now, the assumption is that kind of you were, if you leave the scene, in scene of accident, so it's a more serious penalty. So things like that, you know, I worked on, I loved my eight years, and I'm going to miss it, but also I will be moving on to other things that I will, will enjoy. So I thank everyone in, in the city for working with me, with those that did, and I think we have a better city, and we have a new council, and they're going to move things forward as, as well. So I thank everyone. Thank you.
Mayor Barrett. Presented to Bob Barrett in recognition of eight years of outstanding leadership and service as the mayor of the City of Peoria. City of Peoria, Arizona, 2007 to 2014.
You got to get the grip and grin out of the way there. I, I started with the city in 2001 as the Ironwood District Representative. It's been a long time. There's too many people to thank, but I'm going to single out some anyhow. I'm going to start with Rachel in the back. Rachel Ahaz, my assistant. She kept me honest, sort of, or at least kept me on track. She would not let me make appointments, because every time I made an appointment, I double booked myself, and then I made her go make my excuse for the, the mess up. I also want, I also want to point out that the, we came through the downturn probably better than any other city in the valley. We did not, we did not furlough anybody. No other city in the valley can say that. We didn't, we didn't close our libraries, we didn't reduce hours, and it was, it was the staff, and the staff did this. I mean, we have probably the best staff of any city in the valley, as far as I'm concerned. And they make it all happen. I mean, that was the directive from us, because at that point in time, the feeling was that you need to support your residents because they're hurting. They lost jobs, they were, you know, they were laid off, and all sorts of problems. So they couldn't go to, say Blockbuster for a family movie night, because they couldn't afford to rental, but they could come to the library and check out a DVD and take it home and watch it. That, those kinds of things are critical when, when times are bad for your residents. And somehow, these guys made it work. Now, it, we sort of gave that direction, but we weren't the ones who did that. We have a fabulous finance and budget office. These guys got it done, and they, they deserve recognition. Please do. None of this you do on your own. Everything that's happened, obviously, happens as the, the council, as acting as a unit, or at least as a majority. The, the things that I, I will take away and remember, my first big project, when I first became the Ironwood Council Member, the city had just purchased 52 acres, that is Rio Vista today, the community park. It was the first community park. And when we started this, Kirk had dark hair. Kirk, stand up. He made it happen, and that is one of my, that's one thing, it's my pride and joy for the city. And if you wonder why people do the things that we do, go to Rio Vista Community Park on a Saturday, any Saturday, and just watch for 10 minutes. You'll get it. If you don't get it, then there's no hope for you. So I, I just, I want to thank, thank everybody, all the staff, but especially Carl. Carl was, was the one who, who had the steady hand that guided us through that downturn. We would meet weekly and commiserate and figure out what the hell we're going to do next, but he, he held the course. He, he stayed steady. He's been an excellent city manager, and you need to develop that kind of a partnership with your staff, because the staff is the one that goes out and does the actual grunt work. And finally, in a lot of ways, most importantly, I want to acknowledge my wife. Rachelle, please stand up. Many of you know that I work full-time. In addition to being the full-time mayor, so it's like two full-time jobs. You cannot do that without, without the help and the support of your spouse. Plus, she took something that was near and dear to my heart, which was Christmas for the troops, and ran with it. She's the one that, we ended up sending more than two tons of material to soldiers on the line in Afghanistan, and that is, that is a great accomplishment. Unless you've been there, you don't know how much and how important it is. So for that, thank you. It's been a great ride. Support your city council, but watch them. You know, trust but verify. All the, all of you that are in 60s, you understand where that one comes from. Because they, the city council is going to set the policies and the direction, and I think you've got an excellent start with, with what's going to happen after, after I shut up, and Tony has his, his comments to do it. Because then you're going to bring in the new council, and the new council has, has some great ideas, they have great leadership, and they, they have an opportunity to work together as a partnership to move this city forward. And I have every confidence in Mayor-elect Carlat to help bring this, this city forward to where I wanted it to be. When I first became mayor, things were really great economically. I thought, "I can build a city." You know, you've got this, you've got this broad brush north, it's vacant, you can really build something, build a whole city. And I ended up trying to keep the city that we got intact. But now we're back, and it's now her turn. She gets a shot at that, and I think she'll do a great job of building the city. Thank you very much.
I see that Representative Rivero has arrived. Representative, would you come down? This is presented to Tony Rivero in recognition of your leadership and outstanding service to the City of Peoria as council member, 2011 to 2014.
Thank you, Carl. I'll be very brief, as I've been doing a lot of talking for the last four years, so every speech, every sentence that I could possibly give, the audience and the staff has heard in the last four years. I am truly indebted with the City of Peoria, the, the Acacia District for giving me such a unique opportunity to be able to represent, to be able to represent 26,000 constituents on a variety of issues, police issues, fire issues, water issues, and from day one, I never took the position lightly, and I learned throughout the process. I, I made mistakes, I learned, but at the end of the day, I gave it my all, because public service is important, and for me, representing the citizens was a unique opportunity. I'm going to carry, nothing really changes for me. I'm going to be a state legislator for District 21, and I'm, I'm going to continue working on behalf of the citizens of Peoria. And as I mentioned during my farewell, when I had an opportunity to talk to our staff, one of the reasons I'm indebted to the City of Peoria is I grew truly as a person here. I had an opportunity to argue, debate with my colleagues, the colleagues that are here, and including Councilmember Joan Evans and Councilmember Carlat and Mayor-elect Carlat. And I take the good and the bad, and that's what's made me a better person, understanding others, others' perspectives, understanding other people's views. And not only did I grow as a, a public servant, but I also grew as a person. I matured, I learned, and I think that's going to make me not only a, a better elected official down at the Capitol, but also a better, better father, a better brother, and a better citizen. In closing, I, I look forward to representing the citizens of Peoria, as I mentioned, but I also look forward to working with the city council. And I wish the best of luck to Mayor-elect Carlat, because if there is a job that's tough on this council is the mayor, you're dealing with council members who are working against you, you're dealing with council members who are sometimes on your side, but change their viewpoint, so I know it's a hard position. So as a representative, if there's anything I could do to help at the state level, my door will always be open, including for any council member who's currently on this council, new council members, my door will always be open. Lastly, I don't want to embarrass any staff. The staff of the City of Peoria has been great, has been very supportive, and I want to thank those, and I think those individuals know who they are, who made me truly a better elected official, a better public servant, and truly made me successful in, in my role in serving the constituents of the Acacia District. So once again, thank you so much. I also want to thank the mayor and the council and for their support and supporting ideas and working with me, and for me, truly, nothing changes. For those who are leaving the council, I, I will still continue with my door open and continue the, continue the relationships that I have. Thank you so much.
The next item is the swearing in and the seating of the new council. Judge?
Mayor Barrett, good evening. Members of the council, good evening. Department heads, Mr. Swenson, Mr. Kemp, members of the public. Mayor Barrett, as I understand it, this will be one of the last proceedings that we'll be doing in this capacity with you as our kindly mayor. It was a blink of an eye when most of us stood here in the well and swore you in, but on behalf of the court, we wish to express our gratitude and our sincere appreciation that through your tenure here, you've provided steady, patient, and observing guidance, and we feel that we've attained the mission of the court's purpose, to have a community involvement, and we appreciate what you've done and all the members of the council. So thank you very much from the court staff.
Thank you.
We've been rehearsing for hours to do this swearing in, so if we could have the three new members step forward, we'll be happy to do those proceedings. Of course, and families, camera people, CNN, all of the broadcast networks. I'm going to be standing facing forward. You bet. Let's get him facing towards you. I'll do it. Hi, Mr. Arg. Good to see you. Happy New Year. You're doing great. Can you make your way through? Sounds great.
Hi.
We're all set, and if I could ask you, please to raise your right hands and repeat after me.
I do solemnly swear. I will support. The Constitution of the United States. And the laws of Arizona. And I will faithfully perform. The duties of the office. A council member. For the City of Peoria. Congratulations.
Carlo, good to see you again. Nice to meet you, Francis. Going to also provide some certificates while you're taking these photos, the certificates of election. And there's one for Ms. Vicky Hunt. Sir Carlo, I'm going to hold on to this for just a moment and hand it over to you. There's your certificate. Thank you. There you go. I'll pass it to you. At this time, let's start with Ms. Hunt. We're going to let you say a couple of words, and then you'll pass the word.
Well, it has just been a blink of an eye since I stood here 12 years ago, and I just can't even express how happy I am to be back. First of all, I want to thank my husband, and through the entire process, both of running for office and for serving on council, it's, it's really a job for the spouse, and he cooks the meals and does all those things, and I just do what I do. So I'm, I'm very, very excited to be back. I want to thank the constituents, I want to thank all of my family, the youngest batch you saw in here tonight, we almost got two of them sworn in. Well, they're very obedient. When you say raise your hand, they raise their hand. I, I can't wait to start serving the Acacia District again. We have great plans, many needs, many plans, and I'm anxious to work with the council. We have great plans, many needs, many plans, and I'm anxious to work with the council. I know that this council is committed to working together and to supporting each other, and especially, I'm anxious to work with Kathy Carlett in the direction. I agree with her on one thing, we both love this city, and I love the Acacia District. So it's just full steam ahead.
First, I'd like to thank the public for putting their trust in me and allowing me to be here this evening. I appreciate that very much. I certainly do not take that role lightly, representing the constituents in the district. So first off, I want to thank the public for the trust. I also want to thank the outgoing council members and the mayor for their service to the city and all that they've done. I wish them the best, those that are leaving, and I look forward to working with Kathy in the position of mayor. I look forward to working with the other council members. But I really want to thank my family for their support through this. I'm sure we're all going to probably say the same thing. My mother was actually incredibly supportive, my kids were very supportive. Haley, you can raise your hand there. That's my daughter Haley. Yeah, you can. There you go. These two kids raised their hand, you can do it. My daughter, my daughter Hallie, raise it babe. There you go. Okay? And my beautiful wife, Joy, who has been incredibly supportive. So I thank you all for everything that you went through getting me here and everything that you're going to go through in the next four years. So I thank you in advance. So thank you all, I appreciate it. I really look forward to serving the city.
Thank you and good evening. I have to read. I'm not like anybody else, I can't remember things. My wife says, why do you have to read stuff? I says, if I don't, I'll forget what I'm saying. I just want to thank my wife for being here, my granddaughter, my two great-granddaughters, and they've been a big supporter of mine. I did want to say that I've been at council 16 years now, and when I first got in the council, Mayor Keegan, who's standing back there, was the mayor. Then after Bob Barrett, was the mayor. Now I've got Kathy Carlett, the mayor. I call him man now because he's over the end. But anyway, I did want to congratulate all my constituents who supported me for 16 years, and also to give me another chance to go for four more years, or should give me 20 years if I last that long. I represent the Pine District. It's a great district, and we have great people in the Pine District. I just don't represent the Pine District, I represent Peoria. But the Pine District is my district that I live in, and that's what I run on. And I just want to congratulate all my constituents who supported me and the ones who didn't support me, maybe next time you will. And if you haven't registered to vote, please register to vote because it's important. A lot of people think, I talked to a couple of state representatives, well, they lost the election, they didn't get enough signatures, and I asked them, why don't they run for city council instead of the big job? You know, like we had Tony, who ran for city council. He's back there anyway, he's laughing at me. And they said, well, city council is like kindergarten, first grade, they don't mean nothing. I said, what do you mean they don't mean nothing? I said, I get calls in the middle of the night, I get calls like Saturday, I was watching the Cardinals lose, I get a call. So right away, I called the director of that department. Sunday, I was watching the Dallas Cowboys playing. Sunday, I'm sorry. And you know, these are the things that we take care of. They don't just wait until working hours, they call Saturday, Sundays, I get calls on holidays, you know, and that's part of our job. They don't call the legislature, they call the city council. And that's why the city council is very important to the people in Peoria. And I just want to say, thank the people in my district who supported me and the ones who are leaving, Tony and Ron and Bob Barrett, they've done a great job in their districts. I want to thank each and every one of you. Will my wife stand up, please? And my granddaughter, my great-granddaughters, that's Sophia, and that's Lena. That's my babies. A lot of yous don't know it, but when I was elected in 1999, like I said, I had, I don't know how many kids I had, I had five, I know that. But I got 14, I have five kids, 14 grandkids, 13 grandkids, I'm sorry, and 13 great-grandkids. My other granddaughter's having one, so it's going to make it 14. So I think I've been around the corner enough times. I wish they would stop, it's costing me money. Anyway, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you.
And we'll proceed to the administering of the oath for Ms. Carlett. If you'd step up with your group, if you'd like. Good evening. If I could ask you to please raise your right hand, we'll administer the oath. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the laws of the state of Arizona. And I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties of the office of mayor of the City of Peoria, Arizona. That's beautiful. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you all so very much. Gosh, it just warms my heart to look out and see so many friends and family and supporters. My mother is here, still standing up. She didn't mean to do that, I know. My sisters are here. Thank you guys for coming, it really means the world to me. And of course, my husband and my children, Adam and Natalie, are standing here by me. And they are standing by me just like they have every step of the way for the last 10 years, the entire time that I've been serving the citizens of Peoria on the city council. So thank you, I cannot tell you how much it means to me to have your support. I truly could not, would not have done this without them. I am truly blessed. I also want to offer my sincere gratitude to the citizens who have placed their confidence in me to lead this great city. I am just humbled, and I appreciate it so much. City of Peoria is on the verge of some great things. This is a really exciting time, and I've got some big shoes to fill, I know that. Mayor Barrett, my goodness, thank you for 14 great years of service. It's been some tough times, and you've done a fabulous job, absolutely. And we are fortunate to have the previous mayor, John Keegan, here tonight, who served for 10 years prior to Mayor Barrett. We have some remarkable leaders that I am proud to follow in their footsteps this evening. So thanks for being here, and thanks for your service, both of you. Peoria is on the verge, as I say, of some great things, and Vicki says, full steam ahead. So I am ready. I am ready to work with the fabulous citizens of Peoria. I'm ready to work with our great team, our dedicated city council, and I'm ready to work with our exceptional staff, for sure, Carl, Steve, and all of your staff. Thank you for everything that you do. You guys are professional and remarkable, and you make us all look good every day. That's it?
At this time, there's going to be a 15-minute break, where they need to change the signs and throw me out. I just want to point out one other thing. This is an historical event tonight. Kathy is the first female mayor of the City of Peoria. But I have to say, I really object to putting curtains in the mayor's office. So 15 minutes, and then Kathy will resume the meeting. So 15 minutes, and then Kathy will resume the meeting.
Welcome back to the Peoria City Council meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Carlat?
Here.
Councilmember Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Patanna?
Here.
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Toma?
Here.
Councilmember Leoni?
Here.
Council liaison Laine?
Here.
And council liaison Hilt?
Thank you. If anyone would like to address an issue that is on the agenda or an item that is not on the agenda, would you please fill out a speaker request form? You can find them in the back of the room or at the clerk's desk. If you give us a little information, we will call you up to be heard at the appropriate time. So the first item on the agenda this evening is item 5C. It's the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council or have been previously addressed by the council. They will be passed by one motion unless a member of the council requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from consent? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
First by councilmember Patanna and a second by councilmember Edwards. Please vote. Passes unanimously. And we will move on to the next item in the agenda, which is election of vice mayor. Item 6R. Pursuant to Article 2, Section 8 of the Peoria City Charter, the city council shall designate one of its members as vice mayor who shall perform the duties of the mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor. Vice mayors have previously been elected to serve either one or two-year terms. So we will first establish the term by a motion and a second, and then a vote. After that, I will open the floor to nominations. So is there a motion on the length of term for vice mayor?
A motion for one year.
Okay, one year. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the term? All right, please vote. All right, it's unanimous for the term to be one year for the vice mayor. So next, we will vote on the election of vice mayor. So I'm going to open the floor now for nominations. Nominations do not require a second, by the way. Are there any nominations for the position of vice mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate councilmember John Edwards.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Okay, we have one nomination on the floor for vice mayor for John Edwards. So the clerk is going to hand out ballots. Each council member will write on the ballot, and the clerk will tally those ballots. This is where the music plays.
Mayor Carlat, the vote is as follows. Councilmember Finn voted for councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Hunt voted for councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Patanna, councilmember Edwards. Mayor Carlat, councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Edwards, councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Leoni, councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Toma, councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous for councilmember Edwards to serve one-year term as vice mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the election of mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem shall perform the duties of mayor in the absence or disability of both the mayor and the vice mayor. We're going to follow the exact same procedure. The first thing we're going to do is establish the term length by a motion and a vote. And after that, I will take nominations. So is there a motion for the length of term for mayor pro tem?
I move that that also be one year.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
So, councilmember Hunt, welcome. And second by councilmember Edwards. So would you please vote for the term of one year for mayor pro tem? And it is unanimous. Okay, so now I will take nominations from the floor for mayor pro tem.
Mayor, I would like to nominate councilman Bill Patanna for mayor pro tem.
Thank you. Councilmember Toma?
I would like to nominate the longest-serving member of this council, councilman Leoni.
Thank you. So we have two nominations. Are there any others? All right.
Mayor Carlat, the vote for mayor pro tem is as follows. Councilmember Leoni voted for councilmember Leoni. Councilmember Hunt, councilmember Patanna. Councilmember Patanna, councilmember Patanna. Councilmember Finn, councilmember Patanna. Councilmember Toma, councilmember Leoni. Councilmember Edwards, councilmember Patanna. Mayor Carlat, councilmember Patanna.
Thank you. So that is five votes for councilmember Patanna and two votes for councilmember Leoni. So councilmember Patanna will serve as mayor pro tem for one year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is called to the public for non-agenda items. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker request form and return it to the clerk. I have no speaker request forms at this time. So we're going to move on to reports from city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Carlat. I have three brief presentations this evening, and in the interest of time, we'll be very brief. The first is an award that we received, the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project Award, and deputy city manager Susan Deludon will address the council on this matter.
Thank you, and congratulations, and Happy New Year to everyone. As we ended the last session of 2014, we were giving out an award, and several awards, actually, the city had received, and the awards just keep on coming. So during the holidays, the city of Peoria received yet another award. This time, it was a Leadership in Energy and Efficiency Award, and it was presented to us by way of the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, which is actually quite a great honor because it's six states that form this Southwest coalition and its public interest organizations and governments dedicated to advancing energy efficiency in Arizona, Colorado, Nevada, New Mexico, Utah, and Wyoming. So for the state of Arizona, one municipality received an award, and it was the city of Peoria. And the APS received an award, as well as SRP, and the Tucson Electric Power Company. The city of Peoria is the first municipality in Arizona to adopt the 2012 International Building Code, and the building code has the energy and efficiency standards in it that combine electrical systems, mechanical systems, and construction methods to put a whole house together in the most energy-efficient way possible. And as a city, we were the first one to step out with that. So I wanted to congratulate mayor and city council on this award, and I'd like to recognize team members who have been involved in this because our award went beyond the building code to conserving energy in public buildings, upgrading outdoor lighting to be efficient, and also our efficient fleet transportation. So it was an award really for the great work of Bill Mattingly and Walt Bagley in the Public Works Department, Scott White, Dennis Chase, and now our new economic development director, deputy director, Bob Goodhue, who's joining us on the building side. Want to stand, Bill? Building? Hi, that's our new building official. And he'll continue this great tradition. And I'd be remiss not to mention Andy Granger and Ed Streffler for their public construction methodologies. So mayor and council, I'd like to present this award to you, and it's a good way to start 2050.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. The next presentation we have will be by John Sefton, and this is for the 2012 safety, raising and raising funds for swim lessons through our Play Peoria. The water safety message isn't complicated. It can be expressed in three actions. Block by putting up barriers and preventing access to pools. Be aware, which is all about supervising youth around pools and other adults as well, and whether you're at a city pool, a backyard pool, or up at Lake Pleasant, being aware while you're around water is most important. And be in the know. Learn how to swim and teach your children how to swim, and most importantly, learn CPR. So why the Polar Plunge? Well, it's a unique, and unique like Peoria, it's a unique and fun opportunity for us to offer an informative and educational event. It builds community, builds the brand, and boasts a message that truly saves lives. And on that PowerPoint presentation that I do not have, I've got the stats for the past several years on the water temperatures, and this past Saturday, it was actually 28 degrees at the start of the event. The water temperature was 49 degrees, and we had 175 people actually take the plunge. Both Councilmember Edwards and myself braved that opportunity, and I've got to say that the coldest part was really standing around, waiting to get into the water, and then slightly after, as we got out. Last Saturday, January 3rd, we had the opportunity. We also, through a collective effort, raised $2,548 to go towards swim lessons this summer. And those swim lessons, Peoria Aquatics teaches over 8,000 swim lessons in the summer season, and that's for six-month-old to active adults. In 2014, 707 of those were either free or reduced in payment through our sponsorship programs of Play Peoria. So 707 opportunities for youth to be involved where the barrier was actually financial. So we had a great opportunity to raise in funds and being aware. Outside of that, it takes a great partnership. Our friends at the Peoria Fire and the firefighters charities were out there cooking pancakes. They actually had to heat up the syrup, because it wouldn't pour. It was that cold. Our friends at M&amp;J Trophies and Apparel created the great brand on the T-shirts. SRP, the Safety Connection, has donated significant funds to make this happen. And getting the word out, again, I talked about spreading the word about water safety was one of the primary missions of this event. We had Fox 10, News 3, ABC 15, and Ktar News also pick up on this and help us spread the word about water safety. And I do have the clip from, I believe, ABC 15?
The city of Peoria is taking action to start the new year, raising money to provide children in the city with free swimming lessons. And as ABC 15's Pete Serratos reports, supporters of this cause are diving right in to help them.
Who needs coffee as a pick-me-up when you can jump into freezing water? How was it when you jumped in there?
Cold, very cold.
Very cold. That was the case at the annual Polar Plunge in Peoria. But it's more than just swimming in a pool that hasn't been heated since November. Everyone here donated money that will go towards free swimming lessons in the summer for youth in the city, important for a state where drownings are the number-one cause of death for kids under the age of four.
We're trying to raise water safety awareness in the winter. Water safety, sometimes we forget we have swimming pools in our backyards during the winter, and drowning's happening year-round.
Landon and Reagan both jumped in this morning, but had different takes on it.
I just didn't want to get out of bed.
Then how come you would have done it?
Because I liked the cold.
Their mom came out to support them, but didn't jump in. She does appreciate the fact that the event has a bigger purpose.
And we need to get as much awareness of water safety as we can for our kids. Every year, there's kids that drown.
You've got to watch your kids around water. Two seconds is enough time for a kid to get out in the backyard and get into that pool.
In Peoria, Pete Serratos, ABC 15 News.
And that's our Polar Plunge for 2015. So that opens the door for every other one of you to join John and I. Next year, the Polar Plunge, we'll do it again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. The last item I have is a brief presentation from the fire chief on some of the community events and activities that the fire department's been involved in over the holidays. Bobby Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Mayor and Council, good evening, congratulations, happy to be here. Talk about, John Sefton just talked a little briefly about the Peoria charities, firefighters' charities, and I just wanted to give you a presentation of their activities in December. And for those that are new here, I'd like to just briefly go over who they are. They're firefighters that started off with the late firefighter Valentine, one of our fallen firefighters, that had cancer and died, and so a group of firefighters got together and raised some money to help the family, and continue raising money for that family. Once the family's needs were met, they diverted their funding and their energy into the community to help people of need, and formed a 501(c)(3) to continue that effort. They have raised money for a myriad of organizations, as you can see the list there, and the amounts of money that they contribute to the American Cancer Society in the name of firefighter Valentine, Peoria Youth Scholarship Fund, they do a reading program, they work with the elderly and the senior citizens on pancake breakfast, and they work with the Special Olympics. In December, they had the annual Senior Adult Breakfast on December 10th at the Peoria Community Center for 155 senior residents that enjoyed the pancake breakfast, and Santa Claus came on a horse. I don't know why it didn't come in a fire truck, but it came on a horse. And as you can see, it's a pretty big Santa. And so during the Christmas toy drive, annual toy drive, they've done this for the last 15 years, and collected toys at forest stations and partnered with local businesses, and directly helping families of need to give them presents and toys to kids with families that can't afford toys and gifts for their family members during this time of giving. And it's done by the firefighters, retirees, volunteers, and their families. This year, they gave more than 316 gifts and toys and bikes in the Peoria area to 72 families during the annual Christmas for Children program. A last-minute request by a neighboring city, which was Phoenix, they also helped out with a Somali refugee apartment complex that needed also some help, so they went there and delivered some toys for the kids. And in addition to that, they carry extra toys and gifts on the fire trucks, and as they meet up with kids on the street, they also reward kids on the street. And one of these little boys said to his other sibling, older sibling, "See, I told you that Santa Claus existed." The other kid agreed with him, because there was a bike in it for him, so... But it's been a very rewarding program, and as Vice Mayor Edwards can tell you, last year, rode with us on fire trucks and delivered gifts, and as we were addressing one of the families that was on the list, I turned around and across the street, Vice Mayor Edwards had some lady crying on his shoulder, and I looked at the firefighter next to me, and I said, "I told you not to let him free." And, but he came back and told me a very sad story, that the lady had some surgery and had just a myriad of issues going on in her family, and was very sad that she couldn't give any gifts to her grandson. So Edwards came across the street, got a few gifts from the fire truck, and gave it to the ladies, and went down the street, and that's what the program is for, and that's what it's like. So I just wanted to present that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that's all for my report, Mayor Carlat.
Thank you. It's now time for reports from the City Council. Start with Mr. Leone. Oh, excuse me, Council Liaison, please.
Hello, Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a great Christmas and a Happy New Year. Well, where should I start? I got two weeks off of school. That was awesome. Well, during those two weeks, I was extremely productive. I worked on my Eagle Scout project, and I prepared for my upcoming classes. I would also like to wish the best of luck to the new mayor and the vice mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Leone?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to say is I want to congratulate our new council people and the new mayor. Mike Finn, I'll get to know who you are sooner or later. Congratulations to you, and hope you do a great job in your district, which I know you will. And Vicki Hunt, who I sat in the council here eight years before, and now she's back, so I want to congratulate her, and I know she'll do a great job. And our new mayor, Kathy Carlat, and like I said before, I've gone through three mayors, and she's the third one. How many more can I go through? But I want to congratulate them all, and I'm sure that they'll all do a great job on the City Council. Congratulations, lots of luck to you. The other thing I want to do is I want to congratulate two of our employees who got promoted. Brianna Decker promoted to the mayor assistant. Stand up. And I might screw up this name, but she knows who I mean. Irene Chalas, who got promoted, who got promoted to council assistant, and I know they both will do a great job. I do want to tell John Edwards, congratulate him on being Vice Mayor, and I do want to tell John Edwards that I don't know what he went through jumping in that water, but where I come from, from Boston, Mass., and my wife sitting back there, she can tell you, at City Point Beach and Carson Beach, they jump in that water in the wintertime, what they do if the lake, if the river, the water's frozen, they cut a hole in it and go in. Now, how can you do something like that? I stuck my big toe in there, and I looked like an iceman. But I do want to congratulate John for doing that, and it's something that you will never catch me doing, not in this lifetime. And I want to congratulate Bill Patena for being Pro Tem Mayor. The other thing I'd like to say, I want to thank Ben Toma, who I understand, first me go back, on the shop with the cops, I was like Ben, I used to go to two or three of them. But after a while, at 6:00 in the morning, I have to get up at 5:00, be there by 6:00, you know, I says, "Let somebody else do it for change." But it's great what the police department do for these kids, these kids that don't have anything, and it's just terrific, because when I went, I could see their faces light up, and their parents' light up, you know, and it's just great that they do this for the kids. I want to thank Ben Toma, who was there his first time out, and to my understanding, after reading the paper, he gave out 30 bikes to kids that didn't get any bikes. So that means everybody that was on that car for the shop got a bike. And that, those events are just great. They do it every year, and I'm going to try and get there next year, but don't bet any money on it. I do like to mention, where am I here? On December 13th, I went to the Benavilla Fiesta of Cheers at Central Plaza. It was just great. They have a lot of people there, it was the first time they had it there, had a lot of vendors, and I have to tell you, I was there, and after I left, I still saw people coming in, and they getting ready to close. So I'm saying, maybe somebody else can tell you, but I'm pretty sure we had between 25,000 to 30,000 people coming and going, and it was just a great event. And these events are always great for the city of Peoria, where people get to meet each other, and it's, I'm a big fan of events. If you've been here before, you notice, I always talk about it, and I'll keep on talking about it for the next four years. I just want to say that I'm sure this council will try to work together, and I say try, and I'm sure that they will do the best they can. And as like I said before, being a city council, there's no first grade, or can't get a first grade job. It's a job that we have to continue to do for constituents. And as a council member, I've always have an open door. They call me all hours of the day, seven days a week, and this is something that we have to do, and I would hope that all the other council people will do the same thing, and when somebody calls, they call you. I know the people in the Pine District knows who I am, and I'm sure everybody in the city of Peoria knows who I am. God bless each and every one of you, God bless America, and I hope you had a great New Year's. Thank you, see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Toma?
Thank you. Just wanted to say congratulations once again to the new council members, welcome. Congratulations, of course, Mayor Carlat, welcome as well. Also wanted to say congratulations to John and Bill for your winning tonight's election. I just wanted to say that it was a great, I did attend a bunch of the events last month as well, including the Benavilla and obviously the shop with the cop. We tagged along with the little girl and her brother. Her brother, of course, was very cool at first, but he warmed up to the shopping, but that little girl was something else. She, I think we did at least 20 rounds of Kohl's all the way, over and over and over again. My feet hurt significantly afterwards. But you know, the greatest thing about that, all joking aside, was that these kids get a chance to interact with the police in a way that they normally wouldn't. And I think if there's any way to expand that program, anything we can do to add more programs like it, I think it's a great opportunity, and I think we should do it. So once again, congratulations to all, Happy New Year to all, and we'll see you, I think, later this week.
That's right. Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everybody. Again, welcome to the new council members, and congratulations, Kathy, for your seating first woman mayor of Peoria. Congratulations. I did the shop with the cop. Chief Mentor, I want to congratulate you and your staff for a phenomenal job with the shop with the cop. I think your numbers were up this year with the number of young kids that you did, but as Councilman Toma said, the interaction with the kids and the police officers, and riding in the squad car from Chick-fil-A over to Kohl's, these kids were on their, on the speakers in the parking lot and yelling Merry Christmas to folks, and people were just wondering what was going on, why were kids yelling from squad cars? But everybody was just, it was a phenomenal event, and I want to thank you all, thank you all for putting that on. As Mr. Sefton said, I did partake in the Polar Plunge, it's my fourth year, and Carlo, it's not anywhere close to that Boston temperature. We didn't have to crack any ice, thank God, because I don't think I would jump into ice water. But it was fun, and again, it's for bringing awareness to water safety, and I'll continue to do it, and I'll continue to try to get my fellow council members to join me. I almost had Councilman Patena, but at the last minute, he said he had some previous engagement, so that's okay next year. And again, I want to thank all the council members for their trust... The other thing I want to do is I want to congratulate two of our employees who got promoted. Brianna Decker, promoted to the mayor assistant. Stand up. And I might screw up this name, but she knows who I mean. Irene Chalas, who got promoted. Who got promoted to council assistant, and I know they both will do a great job. I do want to tell John Edwards, congratulate him on being a vice mayor, and I do want to tell John Edwards that I don't know what he went through jumping in that water, but where I come from, from Boston, Mass., and my wife's sitting back there, she can tell you, at City Point Beach and Carson Beach, they jump in that water in the wintertime, what they do if the lake, if the river, the water's frozen, they cut a hole in it and go in. Now, how can you do something like that? I stuck my big toe in there, and I looked like an iceman. But I do want to congratulate John for doing that, and it's something that you will never catch me doing, not in this lifetime. And I want to congratulate Bill Patana for being Pro Tem Mayor. The other thing I'd like to say, I want to thank Ben Toma, who I understand, first me go back, on the shop with the cops, I was like Ben. I used to go to two or three of them. But after a while, at 6:00 in the morning, I have to get up at 5:00, be there by 6:00, you know, I says, "Let somebody else do it for a change." But it's great what the police department do for these kids, these kids that don't have anything, and it's just terrific, because when I went, I could see their faces light up and their parents' light up, you know, and it's just great that they do this for the kids. I want to thank Ben Toma, who was there his first time out, and to my understanding, after reading the paper, he gave out 30 bikes to kids that didn't get any bikes. So that means everybody that was on that cop for the shop got a bike. And that, those events are just great. They do it every year, and I'm going to try and get there next year, but don't bet any money on it. I do like to mention, where am I here? On December 13th, I went to the Benavilla Fiesta of Cheers at Central Plaza. It was just great. They have a lot of people there, it was the first time they had it there, had a lot of vendors, and I have to tell you, I was there, and after I left, I still saw people coming in and they getting ready to close. So I'm saying, maybe somebody else can tell you, but I'm pretty sure we had between 25,000 to 30,000 people coming and going, and it was just a great event. And these events are always great for the city of Peoria, where people get to meet each other, and it's, I'm a big fan of events. If you've been here before, you notice, I always talk about it, and I'll keep on talking about it for the next four years. I just want to say that I'm sure this council will try to work together, and I say try, and I'm sure that they will do the best they can. And as I said before, being a city council is no first grade, can you get a first grade job? It's a job that we have to continue to do for our constituents. And as a council member, I've always had an open door. They call me all hours of the day, seven days a week, and this is something that we have to do, and I would hope that all the other council people will do the same thing, and when somebody calls, they call you. I know the people in the Pine District knows who I am, and I'm sure everybody in the city of Peoria knows who I am. God bless each and every one of you. God bless America, and I hope you had a great New Year's. Thank you. See you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Toma.
Thank you. Just wanted to say congratulations once again to the new council members. Welcome. Congratulations, of course, Mayor Carlat, welcome as well. Also wanted to say congratulations to John and Bill for your winning tonight's election. I just wanted to say that it was a great, I did attend a bunch of the events last month as well, including the Benavilla and obviously the shop with the cop. We tagged along with the little girl and her brother. Her brother, of course, was very cool at first, but he warmed up to the shopping, but that little girl was something else. She, I think we did at least 20 rounds of Kohl's all the way, over and over and over again. My feet hurt significantly afterwards. But you know, the greatest thing about that, all joking aside, was that these kids get a chance to interact with the police in a way that they normally wouldn't. And I think if there's any way to expand that program, anything we can do to add more programs like it, I think it's a great opportunity, and I think we should do it. So once again, congratulations to all, Happy New Year to all, and we'll see you, I think, later this week.
That's correct. Thank you. Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everybody. Again, welcome to the new council members, and congratulations, Kathy, for your seating first woman mayor of Peoria. Congratulations. I did the shop with the cop. Chief Mentor, I want to congratulate you and your staff for a phenomenal job with the shop with the cop. I think your numbers were up this year with the number of young kids that you did, but as Councilman Toma said, the interaction with the kids and the police officers, and riding in the squad car from Chick-fil-A over to Kohl's, these kids were on their, on the speakers in the parking lot and yelling Merry Christmas to folks, and people were just wondering what was going on, why were kids yelling from squad cars? But everybody was just, it was a phenomenal event, and I want to thank you all. Thank you all for putting that on. As Mr. Sefton said, I did partake in the Polar Plunge. It's my fourth year, and, Carlo, it's not anywhere close to that Boston temperature. We didn't have to crack any ice, thank God, because I don't think I would jump into ice water. But it was fun, and again, it's for bringing awareness to water safety, and I'll continue to do it. And I'll continue to try to get my fellow council members to join me. I almost had Councilman Patana, but at the last minute, he said he had some previous engagement, so that's okay next year. And again, I want to thank all the council members for their trust in electing me vice mayor for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Council liaison.
First of all, Happy New Year, and of course, congratulations to all those who were elected to City Council. Congratulations, Mayor. Starting my final semester in high school, which is super exciting for me, graduation is in May. Just ecstatic to continue my work here at City Council, work with the other organizations I'm a part of, and finish strong and continue representing the youth of Peoria in the best way I possibly can. But again, I'd just like to congratulate the new members again, who were elected to City Council, our mayor, our new vice mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. And overall, I hope everyone had a great New Year, had a great Christmas, and I continue looking, look forward to working with all of you in the upcoming days. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Well, you've already heard from me tonight, so I will be very brief. Again, I'm so happy to be back. It does just seem like the other day that I sat up here, and I'm so excited, I want to tell my fellow, my colleagues here how excited I am to start working diligently on the, actually, the challenges, the wonderful challenges that face us in bringing the city of Peoria to what it can be and what it will be. Thank you again to all of you who came out tonight, and we'll see you again soon.
Thank you. Mr. Patana.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say thank you to the Peoria Fire and the Peoria Police and Community Services for everything that they do for our youth in this community. Please know that your City Council is very grateful and very thankful, and I just think that that deserved an acknowledgement. So thank you again. I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Leoni, Councilmember Finn, and Councilmember Vicki Hunt, being sworn in today, and a special congratulations to our mayor, our new mayor, Kathy Carlat. Mayor, I know you have a vision for this city. I know you've been eager to get started, and please know that your council is eager to work with you. So congratulations.
Mr. Finn.
I'm up. Again, congratulations to everyone. I won't repeat all of the congratulations, but you all certainly have my congratulations. Mayor Carlat, I really look forward to working with you. I look forward to working with the staff. I look forward to getting right into it and getting to the job. So have nothing fun to report, I suppose, since I just got here, but I do congratulate you all, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you, and I just want to finish up by saying, we have an obviously great City Council, a great team here, and we expect to deliver lots of goods and services as we build the city of Peoria for our citizens. So thank you all. There being no further business, we are adjourned.